This is a regular meeting of the Mayor and Borough Council of the Borough Seaside Park in the County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, held on Thursday, September 4th, 2025, pursuant to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting the notice of meeting for publication in the Asbury Park Press and the Ocean Star on January 3rd, 2025. Notice of meeting with governing body also has been posted in the corridor of the Municipal Building and in the office of the Municipal Clerk. Local?
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Here.
Councilmember Condos?
Here.
Councilmember Connor?
Here.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Here.
Council President Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Thank you.
Let us all rise together for a moment of silence to be followed by our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, come under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. The first item on the agenda is a request for approval of the minutes of the August 21st, 2025 work session and the August 21st, 2025 regular meeting.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Condos. Roll call.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
I'm staying, I'm not here.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next on the agenda are ordinances. First, we have final reading and adoption, it's ordinance 225-19, providing for the acquisition of stormwater maintenance equipment and appropriating $1,700,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,700,000 in bonds or notes of the Borough Seaside Park to finance the cost thereof. Any thing from council as to this second reading?
(inaudible) Mayor, I guess I'd like to, I guess, mention that this is a full forgiveness loan for this equipment, but we have to do the bonding because it's, we have, once we obtain the equipment, then we put in the receipt for what we spent and then it gets reimbursed. So it's no cost to the Borough.
Very good. Thank you, Bill. Anything else from council? Hearing none, I'll go into the audience for any public comments for final reading adoption 225-19. Seeing none, I would close the public hearing, I would entertain a motion from council.
You make the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Condos. Roll call.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is final reading and adoption, it's ordinance 225-20, providing for the replacement of the stormwater system on a portion of K Street and appropriating $875,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $875,000 in bonds or notes of the Borough Seaside Park to finance the cost thereof. Any comments from council? Hearing none, I'll go into the audience if there are any public comments on final reading and the hearing as to ordinance 225-20. Yes, Nelson?
Nelson, Rosenthal, 122 M Street. I have this, I know what the road looks like over there. What's it gonna look like after it's done?
It'll look what it looks today, but it's gonna be slightly higher.
Strictly higher.
That's correct. It's gonna be designed to direct the water to certain locations and the, that's the reason for the project.
Okay.
It's gonna raise the roads so it's not like a plate holding water in the middle.
Well, I understand what it has gathered there. Where is the water gonna drain, you know?
It's going to be drained into another location, further down, so it's able to park it to where, place where the water can be taken. And the alcohol pipes, the road is being filled by the alcohol pipes from the bay. The water seeps into a level, the road is, that that bay water will now fill into that street.
We're gonna, we're gonna raise those source?
The curving, the portion of the road, portion of sidewalk, whatever it's going to take, so that's not pocketed in one location of water, the water will be directed into another location so the water can go into a storm drain.
All right, do you know how many storm drains we're talking about here?
I did not bring the plans with me, I do not have that information in front of me.
All right, do you know how long the project is gonna last?
Mayor, do you?
It hasn't gone out to bid yet, so we, so.
Oh, oh, okay.
We won't know until it goes out to bid.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments on final reading, adoption ordinance 225-20? Hearing none, I would close the public hearing and I would entertain a motion from council.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Emmett Field, second by Council President Wilk. Roll call.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is final reading and adoption ordinance 225-21, appropriating $50,000 for the rehabilitation of wells, as per discussion at several past work sessions and meetings.
Yes, Mayor, this is ongoing maintenance on our excellent water that we, system that we have. It's ongoing maintenance, it's, do, do we have one of our wells, and hopefully it'll be passed and we will move on it.
And that, this is for well eight, which is at the base of.
(inaudible).
Anything else from council? Hearing none, I'll go into the audience if there are any public comments, final reading and adoption ordinance 225-21. Yes, Mitch?
Mitch Cobbleton, 204 10th Avenue. The last meeting, we learned that this is regular maintenance, with this well and that there's a period of, again, seven or 10 years of these periodic maintenance. Make a suggestion, why don't we put together a simple table, spreadsheet table, of all the wells, when they were last update, maintained, when they're due, and have that on the website, so all those questions are answered before they come up to me, give people an idea of what the lifetime of these are, what they do for, for, the suggestion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mitch. Any other comments on final reading?
I believe the capital plan that we've put together this year has that money set aside each year, I think, for the next three years to cover the wells. We just don't have the spreadsheet, but, we're, we're. Set it up in the capital plan, do that. Thank you.
Tom?
Tom Joseph, 704 South Bayview Avenue. Now, I'm confused. Last meeting, I understood there was an ordinance or resolution, one of these things, to, to go out for $100,000 or $150,000, which I understood was for refurbishing well number eight. And I was told at that point in this meeting, that this $50,000 was for some overrun of a previous task or some such thing. Now, what I just heard is that this is for well number eight, so what was the thing we did two weeks ago?
That was the first reading, this is the final reading.
No.
He's saying the.
Oh, the email.
So, so, if I, so, in, in the capital plan, this year, next year, and the year after, there's a $150,000 funded.
Agreed.
Hmm?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Yeah, 'cause you were right last time, I was wrong.
That's okay. So each well can be rehabilitated. This $50,000 is, is a rainy day fund, in case these projects go over $150,000, we have this capital proven fund money that we're authorized to spend if there's any overruns, over the next three years. So, and it's not, it's not borrowed money, it's, it's money that we have, we just need to authorize it and spend it.
Okay. Let me ask my other question. This is maintenance. I, you know, I, I fully expect that governments do things differently from industry, but in the industries I worked in, maintenance was never capital. There was maintenance. Capital was capital and you used it for long-term things. The ordinance itself, I believe, says that the definition of capital is things that are expected to live more than 15 years, but I hear this is something that has to be done every seven to 10 years. So, I guess my question is, why is this capital?
I think the state's definition of capital is anything over five years.
I, I wouldn't know, I just know what I read in the ordinances. When you read them, it talks about saying this is 15, and I don't have no, have no clue where that number comes from, but, but again, I still, I, I, anyway, that's my question. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments on second reading of the ordinance? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, I would entertain a motion from council.
So, move.
Motion by Councilmember Rotunda?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Connor. Roll call.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is final reading and adoption ordinance 225-22, amending the Borough Code of the Borough Seaside Park so as to amend Chapter 364 entitled Rental Property. As per the discussion at the several past meetings when this was brought up, including at the first reading, unfortunately, the, well, and all those that really had just paid a minimal fine and looked at it as a cost of doing business and kind of flaunted the intent of the ordinance and not applied appropriately or complied with enforcement, so this particular change, as per the recommendation of the committee and the department, would actually put more teeth and enforcement into the ordinance. So, in terms of money and otherwise. Anything from council?
You know, I think it was clarified at the last meeting, I think, with the help of our council to make sure it said, fine not less than 500 and not more than 2,000 for each separate offense. So that was clarified and made clear, because, as you said, if, you know, you're only charging them a couple hundred dollars and they can stay in violation and keep renting, it wasn't serving the purpose. So hopefully this prevents that.
Thank you. Thank the committee for its research and work. Anything further from council? Hearing none, I'll go into the audience for second reading and the hearing as to ordinance 225-22. Seeing no comment, I would close the public hearing and I would entertain a motion from council.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Condos?
I'll second it.
Second by Council President Wilk. Roll call.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Then next is final reading and adoption ordinance 225-23, amending the Borough Code of the Borough Seaside Park so as to amend Chapter 3 of 3 entitled Mercantile Licenses, and this really is part and parcel, go hand in hand with the prior ordinance, and they came about at the same body of research and the same intent and purpose to have more enforcement and a range of realistic penalties and fines. Anything from council on this one?
No.
If, if not, we'll go into the audience for any comments, final reading and adoption ordinance 225-23. Hearing none, I would close the public hearing, I'd entertain a motion from council as the second reading, 225-23.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Connors?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rotunda. Roll call.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
The next is, a first reading is contemplated, 225-24, and this too has entailed an amount of research background information so as to adopt a fairly reasonable policy, and it's my understanding, as per the discussion at the work session, that this should be referred for input from our attorney's office. Is that the consensus? And I know the committee's looked at it, just so, to tweak some of that language, just so a recommendation might come through code and that the units that are referred to in the ordinance would be those that are lawfully CO or the like, some similar intent.
Mayor, yes, based upon my review and my discussion with Council President Wilk, I think we need to sit down and just have a good discussion, make sure we have the language right to meet the intent of the ordinance and then have a first reading, so I would suggest it be tabled at this point.
Okay.
Has anyone else have any comments on a potential tabling action, and if not, do we have a motion to table?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Council President Wilk?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Kraft. Roll call.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next are authorizations, there's one, the Ocean County Condo State Parade, date Sunday, October 12th, 2025, rain date, Sunday, October 19th, 2025, and it's 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., location Boulevard from J Street to Porter Avenue, and that's been the starting area of the parade, staging and the like. Any questions, comments from council, or if not, a motion?
I'll make the motion next.
Motion by Councilmember Connor?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Condos. Roll call.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next, payment of claims, 225-303, approving payment of the animized claims as set forth on the check registry bill list for the time period, August 22nd, 2025 to September 4th, 2025. Any questions or comments from council, or if not, a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Motion by Council President Wilk?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Emmett Field. Roll call.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next, resolutions, I will read in summary fashion. 306, approving the Alcohol Beverage Control Social Affair Permit for Ocean County St. Patrick's Day Committee, Inc. 307, approving the Alcohol Beverage Control Social Affair Permit for CIO Foundation, Inc. 308, appointing Jane McIntosh as technical assistance, assistant, rather, to the construction official. 309, authorizing an award of contract to JP Morgan Chase Bank, providing equipment, technology, and services to allow residents to pay certain borough fees through the use of credit cards. 310, authorizing the adjustment of designated water sewer utility accounts. 311, authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for the recoding of concrete flooring for the Seaside Park Volunteer Fire Company, number one. 312, authorizing registration to GPA NJ Mini Conference. 313, awarding a contract for the provision of an annexation impact study regarding South Seaside Park section of Berkeley Township to Government Strategy Group. Any comments, questions from council as to any of the resolutions? Hearing none, I'll go into the audience if there's any comments as to any resolutions. We allow comments on resolutions, though not required by law, if anyone has any. Nelson?
225-309, guess I've got to force the township to get that up and running, you know? Equipment and whatnot.
What's the cost? There is no cost.
No cost at all? Yeah.
And this is specific for our, our Code of Construction office? They're the only office? Right now, it does not, it does not accept credit card payments, this will make it more convenient for residents who want to go in and get a bulk trash sticker or a garage sale permit, they can use a credit card now, send a cash or check.
I'm just curious, why JP Morgan Chase Bank isn't charging us anything for this?
Well, they make their money on credit card fees.
Okay, okay. Now, to use that service as a taxpayer, President, will there be fees?
I believe the town is going to be absorbing the credit card fees for this particular one, on all or other credit card fees, if you pay water bill with a credit card, then the user, or if you buy a beach badge, the user is paying the credit card fees.
All right, so.
So if you don't want to pay the fee, you can still pay with cash or check.
Right, but there will be a fee, is that what you're saying?
I'm not 100% sure, I believe with this particular one, this is an outlier, because this, this, the program that we use in Code of Construction, SDL, is not compatible with the other programs that we use where we accept credit cards, whether it's through Edmonds or through Square, so that's why we had to go to another provider, and I believe that the town is kind of absorbing these fees, but I'm not 100% sure, but I'll find out.
Okay, I appreciate it, thanks.
Any other comments on resolutions? Hearing none, I would close the public comment portion and would allow a motion as a consent agenda?
I'll make the motion there.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Connor. Roll call.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And that includes the written agenda. Are there any reports or information from council, or anything further at this juncture?
Mayor, just have a short report.
Okay.
The Construction Department issued 20 permits in the month of August, with 10 updates, so there's a total of 30 permits, with the fee payments of $6,892. And I'll have the report on, after the public works meeting coming up, I'll have a, a report after that meeting for the next council meeting.
Anything else from council?
I have a question. Yes, from August, Mayor. The August 25th, 2025 monthly statistics for the Seaside Park Police Department, the department handled 808 calls for service during the month of August, 130 motor vehicle stops, 46 motor vehicle summons, 1,037 parking summons, there were no DWI's, traffic accidents, there were 17 motor vehicle accidents reported, zero injuries, zero hospital transport, one hit and one crashed involving four parked vehicles, subject was observed doing donuts in the Seaside Park Yacht Club parking lot, hacker vehicle located, numerous traffic summonses issued, big mistake in accident, failure to report an accident, careless operation, failure to maintain lane reckless and uninsured motorists. Investigation is still ongoing. Domestic violence incident, there was one arrest, there were 45 emergency first aid calls that were answered, four arrests in the month of August, one aggravated assault on a law enforcement officer, two terroristic threats, one narcotic offense, two weapons offenses, one handgun was confiscated, one disorderly conduct. Background investigations, the department did three firearms investigations, 25 background employment investigations, employee training during the month of August, the National Incident Based Reporting System was patrolman Del Conti, firearms instructor school with patrolman Buss, no internal affairs investigations, the detective bureau has one missing persons investigation, kidnapping injunction with Deoson County Prosecutor's Office, search warrants and data warrants, private for and written, use of force reports, there were six of them. That was it. And I, I noticed that our police overtime the last month has been down markedly, and I'd like to attribute that to our chief, working in the car in the uniform on the weekends and, and monitoring the overtime quite a bit with the officers, and he's been very responsive, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Jerry. Anything else from council?
Yeah, Mayor, I have, I just want to pass on some of the beach revenues from, that we just finished up with this year, for the beach sales, down the Dodge sales. We finished this year, was not finished yet, and I'll explain that, but we finished with $1,777,428.91 in sales with the beach badges this year, and all that does not include December, we have to have December's sales to add into that. So, once we get December's sales, we'll be able to compare it to what we were last year. And when you look at the delta there, in, in last year, we did $1,995,299.16. So, and last year was, was a good year, sunny, it was, yeah, we even had drought, so people were going to the beach all the time, versus this year, the weather was a lot different and things like that. So, we, usually in December, you know, we, we make at least 200 or so, so we should be right online, and I can let people know when December comes with year over year, so that's pretty good with the way the weather was. Now, on the other side of the coin, last year we experienced $50,723 in credit card fees that we paid, and this year we experienced none. So that's quite a savings from us on that, because the fees are passed on to the individuals buying the beach badges, so I just wanted to pass that on to everybody also.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Anything else from council? I know we have, and we welcome, this evening we have our fire chief with us, Dennis Vincent, and I know he has a report that he wishes to share with us, so I'll call him for such a report. Chief?
Thank you. To date, the Seaside Park Volunteer Fire Department has responded to 222 emergencies. Currently have 49 members, 35 of them are full-time and 14 are designated members who are seasonal, and our members of other fire departments were a part of the water rescue team. Members of the fire department are out training every single Tuesday and sometimes on weekends. We conduct double the amount of drills mandated by the state of New Jersey. This year we took on many new members, we graduated three recruits from the Tomford Fire Academy, we all finished the top of their class. These recruits took part in 320 hours of training to get their firefighters certifications. On top of that, we took on one trained firefighter and four individuals solely for the water rescue team. Breakdown of our calls for the calendar year so far, eight arcing wires calls, 50 activated firearms, 20 carbon monoxide emergencies, seven gas leaks, one pole down, four animal rescues, three motor vehicle accidents, five structured fires, three appliance fires, 18 wires down, five pole fires, eight landing zones for medevacs, one fuel spill, five order investigations, one forest fire, seven garbage can fires, one mulch fire, one bonfire, two brush fire calls, one car fire, one open burn, two deck fires, and on the water side, four kayakers in distress, seven boaters in distress, one animal in the water, 37 swimmers in distress, oftentimes with multiple people in the water, one missing motor, one boat accident, one jet ski in distress, and then also one traumatic injury and one laceration. These calls were on Seaside Park, South Seaside Park, and the state park, as well as mutually to Seaside Heights, Holy Beach, Roblet, and Ocean Beach. That's my report in the summer, and your date. Also, I have your attention, myself, Alyssa, and the police department are working on a battle of the badges, so, game. We're looking at the 20th of September, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., we're just waiting to finish the use facility form, but we'll be posting on our social media, we invite everyone to attend that, it'd be nice to pull a community event, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, thank you. What was the date? What did you say, 9/20?
9/20.
9/20. A lot of calls.
Yeah, very much so.
I mean, as someone who lives across the street, I can tell you I'm always impressed by how fast everybody gets there and responds, and I don't know if people
by how fast everybody gets there and responds, and I don't know if people realize like how blessed we are that everybody's, you know, so local, I mean, I laugh because my dog goes out there and howls every time the sirens sound, like, oh, Harry, and she's like, howl for her, but they're there like in minutes.
And now your son.
And now my son joins water rescue, very happy about that.
We are on record to break another record this year, call lines going up every single year.
Thank you, Dennis, certainly pass on our thanks, the governing body from the whole community, all our citizens, to all the hard work of men and women in the fire department as well. That concludes the reports portion, I'll, unless anything else from council at this juncture, I'll ask if there's, anyone has a public comment, if they have any, if they could give their name and address into the record? Yes, Edie?
Edie Klein, forty-eighth Eleventh Avenue. A couple of questions. The Boardwalk project, I know the county's going to come and do the rest of Ocean Avenue, are they going to be able to do that, even though I know it's separate parts, but are they going to be able to get to what they need to get to, or are Boardwalk people going to be able to get to, how's that going to work now? Is that going to work out?
We don't have a date yet from the county, they just, when they did the northern part of Ocean Avenue in the spring, they said they'd be back in the fall, so I've reached out to them to see if we can kind of pin them down, let them know what's going on with the Boardwalk project.
Okay. As far as the changes to the rental property and the mercantile license, how are you informing the property owners, are they getting a letter to inform them, or they're just going to get slapped with the new, I'm not going to have a problem with that, I'm just curious, if they're going to get a letter saying, okay, you've been in arrears and here's what the new thing is, or?
There's, there's no rears.
Going forward, huh?
There's no rears.
No, in other words, you're going to notice a violation, usually you notice a violation, it'll cite the ordinance, and usually it'll give the, the amounts of the penalties potential, and they have an opportunity to cure before summons is ever issued to go to court.
Okay, thank you. I noticed on the bill list that there were several, it looked like courses, and somebody named Carrie Senico was reimbursed, is that stuff that Eric had to go to, or is that for other employees? I thought it said something about recycle, I wasn't sure.
She's our backup recycling coordinator, so she needed to take those courses to maintain her certification.
Okay, okay. The other thing I would like to say is, I thought the, overall, the things that were carried through through our non-department, recreation department this summer went very well, especially the art and craft fair, that was extremely well-attended, a lot of really interesting things, very tempting, but I do have one question, why won't, why isn't the Marina lawn being considered to hold out event? I know that topic's been brought up, but nobody's ever said why?
We, we did address that before, we, we cannot, first of all, the vendors like that spot. They do, our vendors that come here.
Really?
Yes, eighty to ninety vendors we have every later day.
They don't mind being cheeky, yeah? Yes, not?
No, I mean, eighty square, they like the spot.
Okay.
Second of all, we would never, and the farmer's market is down there Friday night, uh, Friday day, before the art, there's no, it takes them a week to set up, basically, almost like a half a week to break down, so there's no way that could be turned over in that timeframe, yeah?
Really?
That's basically it, that's, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Yes, Alan?
Alan Mobley, one four five O Street. I'm trying to find out, and I think you have to have a lawyer's card to find out at the present time, are we on the Superior Court docket with our desert case? Or can we find out, or how do we find out? I mean, are we going to go through another year that we're not going to be heard, and that building's going to be there another year? I know it's nothing, you have no, you have no say over it, I understand that, okay? But it would be nice to know if we are going to be on the docket, and we have a shot at getting this resolved, and maybe having a dust bowl up there sometime in the spring when it's gone.
Just if your attorney's office is handling that suit, so I don't know what the status is, so I couldn't give you an answer. We're, you know, the status of litigation.
I know, you have to be a secret member of the card.
I don't. I just don't know the status because I'm not, I'm not doing that litigation, so.
I, I'm not sure, I, I don't know if it started this week, Superior Court hearings, or next Monday, but is it possible to find out from the people who are representing us if we are going to be on the docket this year? I don't know exactly how it works, I don't know how they pick their cases.
Can we procedurally maybe just give Gene's office a shout and ask him procedurally where we're at?
Yeah.
Okay, Nate will have an answer for you at the next meeting, and procedurally where we're at, if not, I'll, I'll reach out for Gene and find out where we're at.
I appreciate that, I think a lot of people would like to know that.
Of course.
Thank you.
Sure. I'll reach out for Karen, I'll find out where, where it's at. Any other public comments? Yes, Mike?
Mike Spatafino, fifty-ninth Avenue. I just want to remind people that the stargazing event is next Saturday night, that's, the good news is that it looks like it's going to be clear weather, the bad news for anybody that didn't get a ticket, there's no tickets left, so it's going to be a very well-attended event, and I'm glad that we have the opportunity to have such an event for the people in this town, it's going to be a lot of fun. If you didn't get a ticket, do it next year.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you, Mike. Any other public comments? Yes?
Hi, council, Joe McGee, two sixty-four N Street. Four months ago, I came to you guys along with other neighbors, that was Daralick House in our neighborhood, it's been four months for violations that are going back twenty months, we went through another summer, nothing's been done, I was told at that meeting in May that someone would get on it, and I'm kind of wondering what's come of it, and also, he has about ten violations, he's supposed to appear September eighteenth, if he does not appear, is there something that happens at that point?
Yeah, well, the municipal court has certain regulations with regard to whether they can issue bench warrants on certain types of cases, I can't comment about it, I don't know what, what they are. If he doesn't appear, depending on the regulation, if it's been a number of failure to appear on an ordinance case, I'm not sure if the judge can issue a warrant for the arrest or not, I just don't know, I'm not prosecuting that case.
So is it taxpayer that has to live next to him?
So, no, so the other, the other part of it is, is a memo that they go out to the mayor and council and authorization, there's a procedure to declare a house uninhabitable or in deteriorated state, a plane has to be filed, we have to have a public hearing, decision will be made by the hearing officer, and then it can be enforced in a court of law, so we're going to work on that process.
So it hasn't begun at all?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess I should come every month and see if it's started. It seems very unfair having to live next to him and having tie back to roof shingles in our house every day, so.
Any other public comments? Hearing then, I would close the public portion, and I'd entertain a motion from council for adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by council president Wilk.
I'll second it.
Second by council member Connor, vocal.
Council president Wilk?
Yes.
Council member Connor?
Yes.
Council member Ammfield?
Yes.
Council member Condos?
Yes.
Council member Kraft?
Yes.
Council member Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank everyone.